2011 Work Sessions for the Frankford Board of Commission to Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Hedy.
Here.
Commissioner Turner. Mr. May. Mayor Graham.
Here, so we do have four. We can proceed. First item on the agenda is citizens' comments. The process we have is any citizen can address the commission. We try to ask you to hold it within five-minute limitation. Come to the podium, please state your name and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Dave Steele, Director of the YMCA, and we're here to -- we put a new sign up on Broadway to -- a locator sign for our YMCA. Got permission from the state to put that in there. We thought we had permission to tap into a state street light for electricity, and we went ahead and made that connection, then we found out it actually was a city light bulb. So, we want -- we figured out that the electrical use, electricity to light that sign will be about fifteen to twenty dollars a year because it's LED lighting. Somehow, we'd like to make an arrangement with the city to pay for the electricity and avoid the cost of trying to run a connection which would be about one hundred and fifty feet versus the five feet that we made the connection. And I apologize for making what's turned out to be an illegal connection. So, we beg your forgiveness, and we'd like to remedy the situation and come up with a solution that's good for everybody.
All right, now, the total amount, you said, how much?
What we figured is about fifteen to twenty dollars a year.
A year.
In electric to light the sun.
Yeah. City Manager, how you feel about that?
Of course, this falls under our codes, and I'm sure it would benefit the YMCA. I'm not sure how it would affect our codes. Mr. Mueller, could you comment on that?
Typically, all utilities are required to be connected to their own source unless there's an agreement with the city. I don't -- I'm not aware of any other infrastructure that's connected to a city utility source. But that's all I know.
As long as it's legal, I don't have a problem with it.
Pardon me?
As long as it's legal, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't have any problem.
I think an inadhesion of some sort may be between the city and the YMCA.
Yeah, seems like that probably something we can handle.
I believe you have the right guess.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll work some time.
We put that out, right? We'll work some time out.
With the approval of the commission, we'll go forward on.
I think so. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other citizen? Okay, come forth.
Scott Walters out of the 243 West Main Street, and I was just going to touch on a few points about hopefully someday in the future maybe seeing two-way traffic on West Main Street. One of the things I just wanted to relay as sort of a personal witness is there's many nights where there's events downtown and other things, and we sort of have some chairs we set out on the corner and watch, and it's amazing how many cars try to make it up the street the wrong way. And the only thing I would add is I think that there's probably a certain logic to getting these streets going two-way. I think there's some economic benefits if you look at Broadway and sort of the economic benefits of these businesses and a lot of the people trying to get through town, working both ways on the street is something that is significant economically, logically, and I think that in some ways it's more sustainable. I mean, if people have an easier route to get around in town and more routes to get in town, they're using less gasoline, they're polluting the air less, and I think it just makes sort of some good sense. If you wanted to add that to the discussion.
Okay, thank you. I see we have another discussion item later on. It'll be best need issue, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jen Stangler Williamson. I reside at 407 Wapping Street, and I'm also here to support the idea of getting two-way traffic open on Main Street. It'll improve the visibility for businesses.
Would you sort of speak closer to the mic? I'm sorry, I just --
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It would improve the visibility for businesses on Main Street, but it would also, it would move the traffic that is, you know, it would move the traffic to a commercial street rather than routing it through a residential neighborhood, which is currently the case, and we do have a number of children that live on, both on Wapping and Watson Court, and as a resident of the neighborhood, that's my particular interest with that. Main Street also provides the best physical and visual connections to both bridges rather than, and that would improve wayfinding rather than the kind of zigzagging that you have to do Wilkinson to Wapping, down St. Clair, and then up Broadway to get to the Capitol Avenue Bridge, because we often have to direct people who are trying to find their way around downtown. So, I just wanted to show my support.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay?
Hi, I'm Kelly Everman, the Executive Director of Downtown Frankford Incorporated, and I too wanted to just speak very quickly on behalf of two-way parking, I mean, two-way traffic flow on Main, sorry. In case I can't stay here throughout the entire work session, I did want to make note that DFI has been on record for some time as being very supportive of two-way traffic on Main. We are just also aware of the facts surrounding the Judicial Center construction and some other projects that might be upcoming over the next year or so, and we are aware that we would need to take those factors into consideration as we are planning to implement any traffic flow changes downtown. So, I just wanted to stop in, say hello, say we give a thumbs up, but let's please consider the right timing for a change like this, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else?
I'm Brent Swager for Sixth County Street. I want to touch on a couple of things that are on your agenda for today, just briefly, just following up with the topic that a number of speakers have talked about, the two-way of Main Street. I think, you know, I've looked at this, and I've also been involved with another group that looked at it, and it really is something that makes a lot of sense for getting good circulation of traffic around town so that both people that live here and also visitors have a clear way of going around, going through town. Main Street, you know, of course, there's a number of one-way streets, but Main Street's really an obvious choice to make that conversion. And I think the issue with the Judicial Center being in construction, I think that's important to consider, but I don't think it's something that should stop the idea. In fact, I think it's actually quite good timing to do that at this point while we don't have the traffic that is going to be coming to Judicial Center for court, et cetera. Traffic volume is going to be low, so this will give us some time for people to adjust over the next couple of years to a new traffic pattern. Also, I wanted to touch on your first item under your discussion items regarding the Form-Based Code. Congratulations on getting the grant. I think that's great. I'm a member of Envision Franklin County. Form-Based Code is something that we've been encouraging the planning commission and the city and county staff to move towards. We feel like that's really the way that zoning needs to evolve. A lot of cities around the country have gone towards Form-Based Code, and I think going to a Form-Based Code on Second Street is going to be a right step, or a step in the right direction. So, the idea of creating a citizen task force, I think, is a really solid idea to help, you know, work with the staff, come up with a good product. And I guess with my involvement in Envision Franklin County and studying up on Form-Based Code over the last couple of years, I guess I'd like to throw my name into the ring being on the committee.
Thank you. Any other citizen comment? You come in as a citizen? Employee coming in as a citizen?
Glenn Matthews, come in, one team.
You come in as a citizen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's also FYI on the COLA. It's going to be appreciated by the employees, but financially, I don't think they're going to see it. For 2011, the federal government decreased FICA by two percent, and depending on certain analysts, some say it's not going to go up, some say it's going to go back up, so they might not see the COLA increase. Plus, if you've been employed for the city for over two years, you know each year, federal tax table changes. Plus, we're going to be getting a new governor for the Commonwealth, so the state tax table might change. So, be appreciated, but I don't think the employees are going to see it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else, citizens comment? Okay?
Bruce Plank, 111 Oak Pond Drive, a citizen here in Frankford. Actually, I've got a couple of, and I apologize for being late to the game. It may not have any impact, but just let you know how I feel about it. We've had a couple of things. One is that, and I understand that we're talking about two-way traffic on West Main and all that, but for myself and some other residents and stuff, what we'd like to do is just be able to get our speed limits and our noise ordinances enforced. And at this point in time, between fireworks and boom boxes and everything else that takes in, comes into play, we really don't care. We just want to get something done and keep our kids from getting run over. The other thing is that on our garbage fee, garbage tax, whatever it may be, this week, I'm looking at my bill here, and it's, when I wrote the check, it was for a garbage fee. According to this, it's a, to add to our property tax. You know, myself and probably three thousand other residents here in Frankford, we had paid the full sixty dollars for the annual fee, and we know the options are to either get a credit or to get a refund. I really don't want either. What I want is my garbage picked up for the twelve months for what I paid. I don't want to get a credit back of thirty dollars, and if it's going to be in the ballpark at fifteen dollars a month, which is the numbers I keep here and bounce around, that's only going to give me two months' worth of credit. I just want my garbage fee picked up because the ordinance that was in place when I paid the fee was for the annual rent. So, for the folks that paid the full amount, we don't want to be penalized. We didn't cost anything. We didn't cost any emblos, we didn't cost any postage. We paid the bill. We just want what we paid for, because at the time that we paid for it, that's what it was. So, for us, and again, as I understand the numbers, we just want what we paid for. We don't want to cost any more money, but we don't want it to cost us any more money.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizens' comment?
Hi, my name is Evelyn Clark. I'm a dentist in downtown Frankford. Thank you for the opportunity to make my request. I have purchased a lot from the city on Birch Court over by the Commonwealth Credit Union, and part of the deeds on that land were that I build a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot building. I plan to relocate my office, my dental office, over there by building, a building. And I am here to ask the city to allow me to build a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot building instead of a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot building. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Joke Rider was my site developer on that lot. The city combined two lots to accommodate me, and it's a little bigger lot than it originally was. So, when the site plan was developed, there is two sides that we can build, one smaller office building and another smaller office building. So, if I build a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot building, I have ample room, and it's shown in the site development that I provided the city to build another, at least two thousand square-foot building or bigger, on the other side of my lot. The second reason that I think it would work is when I purchased the land, I think the city had intentions for more professional buildings and more state office buildings to be placed in that farm area that was being developed, and it now had, part of the area has been sold to the plant board. So, the atmosphere of the area has changed a little bit for future planning. Thirdly, I want to stay within my means and be financially responsible, and a thirty-five-hundred square-foot building is a little more than I can handle. So, I would like your consideration in changing the deed to allow me to build a twenty-five-hundred square-foot building instead of thirty-five-hundred square-foot. With the future of me potentially placing another professional building on my same lot for maybe the same type of discipline, a dental professional or medical professional on that lot.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, now, in dealing with this type of an issue, we have to refer to, get some other information from our planning zoning department, or?
I think there's some precedent for this with prior development on the Carpenter Farm, and any deviation from the requirements would have to be approved by the city commission. Is that correct, Mr. Schlistker?
That's correct, because what originally happened when Dr. Clark purchased the property from the city is that she requested that the city grant a variance from the deed restrictions that applied to property out in the Carpenter Farm. And the city granted that request and agreed to set the minimal square footage for the building on that property at thirty-five-hundred square feet. And of course, Dr. Clark is now requesting that it be reduced to twenty-five-hundred square feet with the possibility of adding another structure later, and what I would suggest is that if she has any plans that could be submitted to Mr. Mueller, then he could then review it and provide the commission with his input, and then the commission would make its decision. But because this is the Carpenter Farm, and you all are waiving restrictions that the city is imposed, waiver would have to be done by the commission and not planning and zoning.
Okay. Could you provide that?
What specifically could you let me know? What specifically?
Mr. Mueller would be the person to provide the details on that.
If I may, Ms. Clark has provided a revised development plan, and we have reviewed it. And in the past, this was done under a closed session for property. There was a specific agreement of contract when she purchased the property, with caveats of conditions, and now that those conditions are being requested to be amended, so I didn't know if that would be appropriate to go closed session, discuss that more, or just talk about it.
Since we're past the property purchase stage, then it would be discussed in open session, and that's the way it's been done previously on other requests to amend the restrictions applicable to lots in the Carpenter Farm when they've been made, when the requests have been made after the property's been purchased. If you recall, there were some amendments made to parking restrictions on the last lot out there, and that was done in open session. And have any details been provided concerning a second building that would be built out there on that lot?
It shows a feature layout on that plan. There's no time for that. There's a layout for it.
Let me just move this one along, Kim.
We can put it on the agenda for the 25th.
Pardon me?
We can put it on the agenda for the 25th.
Yeah, okay. City Manager, you just said this is something we can put on the agenda for the 25th. Commission, y'all? Yeah, okay? We'll get that on the agenda for the 25th, next Monday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else now, citizen comment? Okay. Thank you very much. It's a very informative citizen comment session. All right, City Manager, we have staff reports.
We'd like to have our staff reports now. Chief Posits, do you have anything to report?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Sir.
Mr. Jolson?
I have one. Last week, Bobby went to a JS conference in California. In that conference, the ASRI company, the JS software company, given a word to the city of Frankford for a special statement of word, and it's like a statue or plaque that, I'm not sure if we have to do a formal citation for it here for the mayor. The, I guess, the, someone from the company should have come and given a word, but they couldn't, so Bobby received it for us, for the mayor. So, do we do it formally for the regular session, or just?
Well, we'll try to get any kind of, yeah. We'll do that next Monday.
Yeah, so we do it?
Or sometime.
Okay. I'd like to put it in there.
Certainly.
Regular session, yeah.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do you have anything to report today? Mr. Hackbart?
We have, we're asked to look into free transportation for KSU students, and we had to check on our grant requirements and look at the wording in our grant for our transit. Since our meeting two, a week ago, the wording is in place for us to offer free transportation, and so we submitted a resolution to go on next Monday's meeting for your all's consideration. And that way, we can during the KSU orientation, kind of put out some information to the students as they come on campus. So, if we can get something approved by our board in July, we will be ready to do an orientation with the new KSU students in August. So, just wanted to bring that to your all's attention.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Chief Willhort?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scow?
Yes, sir.
Put that in the minutes. Go back to hall.
I just have a small change for my agenda. On item 6.1 for the resolution for safe routes to school, we put on there that we were going to emphasize sidewalks. After looking at the application and talking to Ann Northcutt from the county and Paul Alexander from the Health Department, we'd also like to add bicycle lanes and other bicycle facilities to that. Is that okay with you all?
I don't expect anything. Okay. That'd be fine. Okay, now, we're down to this end. Okay. Just here, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to see if the commission will add an agenda item where we retain Kevin Weaver with Sturgill, Turner, Barker, and Maloney to represent the city in two workers' compensation cases that have been filed against the city. He's been the individual that has represented the city in workers' comp cases since 2004 and does a good job and is familiar with at least one of the cases. So, I'd like to add that for y'all's consideration.
Okay, please do.
That concludes staff reports.
Okay, and next, we're on to old business. And on the old business is the discussion of the joint meeting with the city and the Frankford Plant Board and the county regarding sustainability issues. Mr. Goode.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Progress is being made toward holding this joint meeting. The county says, you know, they are willing to meet, just a matter of finding the appropriate time. And the Frankford Plant Board wants to poll their board members about it, and they said logistically it might be kind of difficult for everybody to get together, but they'll be getting back with us.
Okay. Now, did, is this, did you, in your discussion with them, did you mention anything about having that, the joint meeting with, on August 1st? Did, I had raised that issue, I don't know if we ever want that, but, you know, the first meeting was supposed to be?
The meeting on, yes, the meeting on August 1st. I think the county has actually done a call on that meeting, so everything looks favorable for that meeting on August 1st.
Yeah, that's, it's five o'clock?
Paul Sorey Library.
Five PM at the Paul Sorey Library.
Okay.
And as I understand it, there'd be a discussion of the basic elements of what TIF involves, and the developers, well, I think, have their proposal at that time.
Yeah, okay, and on this, the joint meeting, but sustainability issues, was there any possibility of maybe of tagging that one along with this same meeting?
Excuse me. Well, that was proposed, but because it would make it such a lengthy meeting, I think it was decided to have two separate meetings.
Is that right?
I mean.
I don't think the county should have one meeting.
But that's my thing, I'm sorry.
I don't think the county should have two separate meetings.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just, it's a thing, I was trying to get them combined, but they don't want to do that, I know. So, let's go. Thank you very much. Any other comments on this old business discussion item?
I have something about the old business. With the IT department, Jolson, I just want to thank you guys for updating the website for the business information and making it just like a two-jump thing versus four to six. So, thank you. And I talked with the chamber as well, and they said they've been trying to put that on the website for two years, and they're glad to have it on our website, so thanks so much.
Okay. Commissioner Wender?
Regarding the joint meeting, I'll just say that I'm happy to meet whenever the other bodies, whenever they have other bodies can and want to, and preferably the sooner the better. I mean, sometime in August would be ideal, but whatever works, works.
And I'm able to change my schedule to get that meeting whenever, even if you make it on a Tuesday during the day. Is that when the county meets? That one time a month?
I don't know. I don't know with the county.
But I can change my schedule in order to be there.
I think we can maybe be considered the most flexible of the three entities. So, whatever works for the other two, we can probably make it work.
Green Vision, a regional group, will make presentations at that time, a series of presentations of, I think, seven or eight minutes apiece on several different subjects. So, with the presentations plus the discussion, it might, you know, draw out into a more lengthy meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other old business? Commissioner Wobber?
I've got a couple of pieces, and some of this might want to wait until we have our full body here. We're operating on a bare quorum today.
Sure.
But we had discussed the possibility of discussing transit policy. I think we talked about putting that on the agenda earlier this month, and it kind of just got lost in the shuffle, I guess. But there was a question of, the state had a request for the trolley. That individual request, I understand, has been handled, but there was talk of having a just general discussion of transit policies, just so it would be clear, kind of clear guidelines to go by.
Actually, the request for the trolley was just one example of a much broader issue that I would hope the commission would discuss at a future time. It's not an urgent issue, but the fact that there are so many events that are requiring the city to work overtime and to make special provision, this stems from discussion I had a couple of months ago with Chief Willhort and the number of running events and biking events, and events, and some charitable events, which, which are all good and, and contribute to our community and, and our quality of life here in Frankfurt. But we also have to recognize that they draw our resources. And I necessarily was not asking for any change or stricter policy on these. I was simply thinking that it would be good if the public and the commission was aware of this combined draw on our resources that comes. And also, I think the city should get the benefit of the community knowing our contribution to these things and, and support of these things. And with DFI and others present here today, I'll go so far as to say, I think the city did an excellent job supporting the Derby celebration, and I think we did an excellent job contributing our part to the NASCAR event, and we will continue to do those things whenever possible.
I could be, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, and I, I think that Jeff and Rebecca could probably, could probably speak the best of this, but am I correct in understanding that our, our transport, you know, transportation expenses are largely subsidized by the state, and that those, and that the amount of money they give us is based at least in part on ridership numbers?
Yes.
And so, and so it seems that we, that, it seems that the more opportunities we have to, to get the buses out, to, to get more people in them, even if it's just for, for special events, you know, outside of normal hours, that, does that increase our state, our state funding, so that actually has the potential to bring in more resources? How does that, and, and does that dynamic allow us, how does that affect our ability to charge for those services?
Would you come up here and respond?
Do, I don't, I mean, I don't know how much background you want on this, but public transportation is not a moneymaker. It will never be a moneymaker. It's a service for citizens. And so obviously, the more ridership you have, the more that you can show for need, the need for the services, then you can ask for more money. And if you show the need, then in the past anyway, we have received more money. So that's why we are not necessarily looking to increase fares or anything like that. It's getting people on the bus in those seats, that's what's important.
Uh huh. That, that, that answers my question. Thank you very much. I mean, I guess I would just suggest that, given, given those factors, I think it's even to our, to our interest to, to keep the, the transit open to as many, at least other governmental agencies and nonprofits, et cetera, you know, as, as possible.
Yep. We could do that, any policy changes?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
I'd also hope to talk a little bit more about a green roof and to get an update on firework ordinances, but maybe we should just, there's, there's other urgent going on, so I guess I'll hold off on that until we have a good commission.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, too.
Sure.
Those things are, let me take a little discussion here.
Sure.
We need some other people input. Okay, anything else? New business? Old business, okay. New business? Commissioner Wender?
This is something that, that would need, you know, need to be discussed by the larger commission, but it's, I was going to bring this up even before Mr. McLean raised concerns about noise ordinances and noise violations. Those, those things are notoriously, noise ordinances in particular are notoriously difficult to enforce, but it seems that, that there are some things that could be done. And I was, I was kind of hoping we could maybe consider a ban on glass pack mufflers. They're, a glass pack muffler, it's a, there are types of mufflers that some people get installed that make a lot more noise, as in they're made to make noise, that's the...
Like a Harley?
Right. I mean, the kind, the purpose of a muffler ostensibly is to muffle sound. Some mufflers are being made to actually exaggerate sound. So some of the really loud, like, vroom, vroom, that's, that's a...
You gotta change the name, muffler something else.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't even know how they get over the calling of mufflers. That's something I'd, I'd like to get on the table for a discussion. It seems like we could at least, at least get rid of those things.
We get into those, yeah.
And then, and then also, I, I don't know if this requires, I think this is, this is a small enough thing to go ahead and bring up. Envision Franklin County has put together a couple of, of lists, one list of county board appoint, you know, county appointed boards, and another list of city appointed boards. And it's just a list of every board in the city that the, that the mayor makes appointments to, just as a public resource for people's information. If you want to get involved, these are the boards that are servable. But they put this list together, and it's, it's a, it's a pretty good thorough list with contact information and everything. I was wondering if we can post it on our website?
I see no problem with that.
Is that okay?
I see. I know, when, first, maybe it's an idea in the head when I was elected, mayor, was trying to get out that we want people who like to serve on committees and things in our committee, to let it be known.
Yeah.
We haven't had a great...
I know.
...come in, but nevertheless, so I see nothing wrong with that. I think that's something that is worthwhile, real worthwhile, to do that.
That's all I've got for today.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
New business?
Yep.
Okay. Now, we get into our discussion items, the first discussion item is establishing a citizens' task force for Form Based Code project. And we, do you have any introductory comments you'd like to make on that?
Before we move to that, Mayor, if I may, department heads may be dismissed unless you think you have future business on the agenda. And then in answer to your question, we have, we have thought about this some more and would seek more input from the commission itself about who you consider stakeholders or what the composition of the task force should be. And I think it would make good sense to limit the task force to seven or nine members. So I'd like some feedback from the commission if you feel that's appropriate. And then we'd also like to get staff input on the composition of, of that, and staff would certainly offer technical assistance to the task force.
It's just, I mean, I'd like to add a comment from Ms. Edelman. It seemed to me like, two years ago, was this when, when downtown Frankfurt hosted the Association of Downtown Frankfurt Group, I mean Downtown Groups here?
The Main Street Program.
Main Street Programs.
The, the Main Street Program, uh...
Yeah, that, you hosted it.
Last couple of years they've come this year.
Okay, now this is, I'm just trying to get something zeroed in so I can understand this topic a little better. The presentation that was made by the people from Orangeboro.
Fred Reeves.
Was that pertaining to this same type of thing, Form Based, or not? What that, what they was talking about, okay, you don't really know.
Well, he was focusing mainly on describing the renaissance.
Right.
They had been going through on their riverfront.
Yeah.
He may have made mention of Form Based Code, as I know that is a popular...
Was it, maybe, did Ned Crankshaw present as part of the Main Street Program, or was that a separate program?
But Ned came when we were looking at Second Street, applying for an earlier grant. Remember Rebecca? Ned didn't speak at that particular one, though, but...
Okay, well, I just wanted to just know if, okay, it's a good little discussion here, because I'm limited to really how much I know about this particular topic, and I just wanted, we did attend that meeting, and I'd say, Commissioner Wender?
I'd say, I'd say limiting the task force is probably wise. It doesn't need to be too large, especially in light of the fact that this process is going to require mass public input. So it's all the task force would be doing. That wouldn't be the sum totality of, of citizen involvement. I think they would just be facilitating, and, and they would be responsible for, for making sure that all of the appropriate stakeholders are invited to the larger charrette process, et cetera. So I think we could even get away with it, with something as small as five, frankly. I'd say the only essential components would be people who, who, who want to do it, who have, you know, who have an interest in, in actually, you know, spending some elbow grease on the project. Off the top of my head, I think obvious stakeholders include, and will include DFI. I think it'd be great to have Dave Steele, who are a representative from the Pioneer in Healthy Communities Group. There's, is everybody familiar with the Pioneer in Healthy Communities Group?
I am.
It's, I think, I think...
They, we're trying to help this community in the state.
Yeah, it's a, it's a private group operating off a grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and it's being coordinated statewide by the YMCA, but just trying to combat childhood obesity specifically through policy changes and built environment. But Form Based Code is one of the things that the P H C group was encouraged to look at. Dave Steele is the head of the, the P H C group, but I, I know Form Based Code isn't interested there, so it'd be great to have somebody, somebody within, for within that, that structure. A property owner, or, you know, a property owner on Second Street would be good. I can, even they give a couple of folks who own property who might be interested in, in developing further on Second Street, and since this would impact future development, it'd be great to get some of their input. Those are all just thoughts.
Okay.
I think Brett Swager would be great, too.
With Envision Franklin County?
Yeah.
I was just going to add with that, that someone from Envision Franklin County, it'd probably be wise to have someone from there, or, or two from that group.
Okay, and then we're sort of leaning on you to help, give the fire, you know, there's some what have you?
Okay, yes, Mayor. I, I think it's not worthy that, if I understand this correctly, Rebecca, we've got a rather, a rather tight timeframe to, for the task force to function within, and then if I understand it correctly, before the end of January 2012, the task force would have to have a first draft, or is that, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So the task force would, would need to be, like has been said, they'd have to be willing and pretty aggressive timetable.
Yes.
Okay.
In light of wanting to get this thing formed, I mean, they should probably get formed sooner rather than later, then perhaps we could just solicit letters of interest over the next week and, and see who's interested, and that might make things, that might make things kind of easy. We might have, we might not get dozens of applications. If we only get five or seven or nine, then we're sitting pretty...
Do, do you want to take everyone who applies?
I think, I guess, I mean, if, if dozens of people apply, which is not realistic at all, but then, then we would need to whittle it down. But beyond that, I mean, I can't imagine we're going to get more than a half dozen people who actually want to get in and work on this thing. And if, in that scenario, yeah, I think, I think it'd be great to take, take all the help we can get.
Planning Department, nice to play.
Well, yeah, and the planning department could definitely, I mean, should be involved in, in forming the board. We, we could get letter, maybe we could just get letters of, letters of interest submitted over the next week, and then have the, have staff make recommend, make a recommendation based on those letters of interest.
Well, now, how you going to, how you planning to get this word out that you want a letter of interest? It's going from newspaper or, or...
We can, we can definitely...
For the, you know...
Sure. That's a great turnaround. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to ident, I'm happy to spread the word amongst the, some of the stakeholders I mentioned. We can post something online, easily enough on the State Journal's website.
It'd be simple, you know.
For free.
I think we could, you know, using a variety of mechanisms, I think we could get, you know, a proper number of people committed to it.
And this is, and this is going to require a public charrette process down the road. So anybody who wants a voice in, in the code would, would get one at some point.
Would the task force decide how they want to go about it? Or?
Define it.
The process. I mean, you're saying already that we're going to do a charrette. Well, is that, would that, we dictate that to the task force, or, I'm just trying to get the process?
Those are just the, the terms that this, this project has been discussed. This, this project's been on the table for, since sometime last, last year, if I recall correctly, because we applied for a grant sometime last year, and it's always been discussed in terms of a, a charrette process. And I, I guess that's kind of conventional wisdom when establishing a new code, is you want to do it with as much input from the community as possible. So, yeah, I guess, I guess that is, that is a condition that, that I'd be inclined for us to set. But I imagine it's also, I can't imagine that concept would, would see much opposition just because that's, that's kind of the norm for this kind of process, anyway.
It, it seems to me that if you have your task force, you would give them the overall charge for the task force. You would have whatever it is be done by that timeline in December or January, and then with the makeup of the task force, with that information, they would make, give them some autonomy in determining how they go about, go about that. Hopefully, I think most people would have a charrette, but I'm a little dubious to try to tell them upfront, you know, you must have a charrette.
No, that, that's fair, and we wouldn't need to dictate a charrette, per se, but I think we would need to make it clear that, that the broader community needs to be given a voice in the process, however they...
So our goal is to get as much input as we can in a short period of time.
Yes, yeah, and get as much people involved as we can. Yeah, okay. All right, the next item of discussion is city employee COLA. Now, who, does the mayor, you want to start this off, or?
Well, in, in a prior meeting, the COLA was discussed and as the budget, during the budget time, which, which was January, February, March, we put a budget together based on the conditions and understandings at that time. But then subsequent, subsequent to that, we had, I mean, in the, at the budget time, we, I had proposed a 1% COLA at mid-year. And then subsequent to that time, the budget condition and the expected year-end condition of the budget improved or seemed better. And so some of the commission had discussed another COLA or a different type of amount of COLA, and so we would...
Ready for discussion.
Just to be ready to discuss that if...
Okay. Now, Commissioner Wender, you were the one that, that commented on this, I believe at last, last meeting, so you want to state what it is that you, that you're suggesting?
I'll just express, could then you support for, for handing out a 2% COLA in January?
Another 2%?
A 2%, as opposed...
So we make a 3?
Oh, no, no, hand, hand out a 2 as opposed, as opposed to a 1.
Oh, I see, a 2.
And I know that's not, you know, can't ever make everybody happy. That's not going to be enough for, for some folks, but, and even, and it might, and it might just get balanced out by the stuff that, that Glenn mentioned. But that beats not doing it and having the stuff that Glenn mentioned take everything down. So, I mean, you know, anything we can do, I think, would be, would be appreciated. I mean, I understand that we need to, we still need to be careful and that we're not out of the woods economically yet, but I think we can afford a 2%.
Commissioner, did you have any comments you want to make on this line?
No, I just, I just support giving as well a 2%. I think, I think we have enough to, to go beyond the 1% and give a 2, and I support it.
Now, let me ask this question. Are you proposing that this be done soon, I mean, decision made soon? Because I'm thinking, let me just give you some thoughts I have, okay? The, given that everybody, we all want people to have as much money as they can get, I think that's understandable. that's understandable. I come from that working class myself. The, here's the thing I see in future. I know that come January, the fund, that we have, this commission has to make a decision about increasing the sewer tax fees. I believe we're by, see, by this consent agreement, which will, I believe, 15% come January. And I know in 2010, we, likewise, we had that charge to do that, but rather than implementing that, we passed some, we sold some bonds, and it took care of that. I think we were able to get a good bond rating, I think this is right now, as I recall, because of the financial condition of our city, helps to get lower interest rates, is my understanding. All right, now, I've tried to study this, too. In the budget that we just passed, I know we, we're going to, now, I'm reporting, I passed, I wrote it for the budget. Included in that was 2, 2.51% that the city added to the retirement for hazardous duty, and 2.03% for the non-hazardous. And I just, I'm just saying, I want to make sure the commission, we understand that there are contributions more than just with wages. And also, the, in looking at that added increase that was mentioned here about the budget, we've had an increase in the, I think, insurance premium taxes that more than what we anticipated, I believe, and then maybe occupational taxes more than what we, maybe an increase than what we anticipated a little bit. And, Mr. Dawson, I may want you to come up here in a minute, because I'm going to make a statement to them, and I want to make sure I'm right, that we, there are certain one-time costs or expenses we may have to make, that we bought some automobiles and different things. Would you come up here, please?
Sure.
Because I just wanted to make sure that, all I'm trying to do is make sure we have clarity, you know, we understand the information, and then I'm going to suggest that we don't, ultimately, I'm going to suggest that we don't make a decision on this 2% until somewhere along October, or somewhere along there, November, as we see how the money flow is coming in. Because we got more coming in this last part than we anticipated. And, but to keep that, you know, because we know that these will be recurring expenses when we do now. Would you mind just telling me, explain about?
Are you talking about like other things that came out of other funds, for example?
Yeah, yeah, that, two things. Some of the things we've been purchasing out of other funds.
Right.
And also, how that, the revenue that we've come in, which I sold a little over a million dollars, I mean, that, how that affects where it came from and how it came.
Okay, okay. Well, one thing that happened, we just closed our fiscal year out just last week, and so it looks like, right now, pre-audit preliminary information, our revenue versus expenditures is up about a million dollars, our revenue over our expenditures for last year. And that's pre-audit. There's several things that contribute to that factor, and I'm going to give you these numbers up. I don't have anything written down here right now, but about $270,000 approximately, that million dollars is grant money. It's grant receipts over grant expenditures. And that's kind of one-time money, so you can't, you know, you can't depend on that every year, and I'm not, I'm not for certain how that is impacting into the audit. For example, that could have been picked up as a receivable last year in the audit, and maybe that doesn't go into our reserve perfectly, so I'm not sure about that, but, you know, our audit's going to be complete within the next, well, by December, we'll have a hard numbers for the audit. So these are preliminary numbers. So that's one thing. It looks like our occupational tax was up approximately $600,000 plus over, over top of our budget, some of that being private sector money, some of that being state, state money. About approximately $400,000 of it was private sector money, approximately $200,000 of that was state money. So that's some of the increase. I'm trying to think, and then we had savings from each department, that approximately $200,000 of savings from, from each department. Of course, those are postponed expenditures. One thing that happened last year, you may recall that we postponed a lot of hiring during the year, and I know we had hired, for example, four police officers mid-year, approximately. So, you know, that's going to, that's going to come, you know, next year. Not trying to put the mark on the spot, but, you know, those are expenditures that we put, we postponed as long as we could.
You're going to have to replace them when they leave, though, aren't you?
Yeah, so I'm just saying, those are, those expenditures that we, that we ended up So those are some of the factors that make up the million dollars. So it's not perfectly, you know, that we booked a million dollars perfectly that we've been able to save, but I'd say about half a million of that is probably pure, pure savings. One thing that happened last year, expenditures, you mentioned about purchased out of other funds. We purchased, now I want to keep picking on Mark here, but we purchased, what, five police cars, approximately $127,000 out of the U.S. forfeiture account last year. And, you know, normally, in the good times, when the times were, when they were happy days, we were buying that out of, out of the general fund, but now we've had to purchase a lot of our fixed assets and equipment out of other funds, so Mark consented to purchase those police cars out of the U.S. forfeiture account, about $127,000. Also, commissioning a bribery this year to purchase the narrowband radios, and there's about $148,000 of those radio expenses that weren't purchased out of the general fund, but it was purchased out of, purchased out of E911.
Drug贩子.
Drug贩子.
Yeah.
So, anyway, those are some expenditures that didn't come out of the, you know, the general fund. It makes the general fund look, look stronger than it, you know, would have normally looked in the good times, when you're buying all the equipment out of the, out of the general So kind of a summary of what we've done over the past year.
Okay, thank you. Either one, commission, have any questions? Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's.
All of, is this discussion item, and I just wanted, just in the discussion, to mention some things that concern me, and so that to keep things going, I'm thinking, I'm thinking bond ratings, I'm thinking we got a double minus rating right now, which is pretty good, and that's built on how we, as I understand, how we manage our finances. And so, that, just my contribution to discussion was just think about these things, and if the money, things keep operating well like it has been the last few months, and comes in the next few months, then wait to see before we make a, just a final decision on that.
One thing I might add, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I could.
Sure.
You were talking about, you know, folks, a lot of times, you know, we see our paychecks company every, every, every two weeks, and, you know, we see what we get on our paycheck bill. We don't, a lot of times, we don't see or understand how much the city pays out in health insurance benefits, as well as, you know, retirement benefits. And just some general information, I want to get, kind of let you know what the, what the, we've closed our books for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011, and I've got some actual numbers, what we paid out in salary benefits in the general fund. In 2009 to 10, ended 6/30, 2010, we spent in general fund dollars for benefits and wages, we spent $21 million, okay? Last year, the fiscal year ended just June 3, a couple of weeks ago, we spent $21.5 million for wages and benefits, so that's about a 2.61% increase. Of course, you know, our folks didn't really see a lot of that going in their pocket, but, you know, you've got to look at the big picture, because, you know, you know, we are paying out more money, you know, for benefits and pitching costs. Our projected budget for next year for wages and benefits and everything is 22.6. So that would, that would, right now, that's based on, you know, the budget, the budget we just completed, so it would go up about a million dollars, that'd be about a 5% increase, you know, in total wages and benefit costs. Just to let you know, that's where we are. And we are, we're running really close to budget. Like I said, we just finished our, our year end, and we were right on budget. We were within about $40,000 of our estimated budget cost for wages and benefits. The actual numbers compared with the budget numbers, so, you know, they're not, they're not fluffed, they're, you know, they're pretty, they've been running pretty true to our budget. So, just FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wilder?
A couple of things. I mean, first, just to note, I don't think that the sewer, the sewer budget's relevant to this.
That's right. Well, I'm talking about if we have to go sell bonds again. I'm talking about what will be the, the rate that our, bond rate that our city has, that's all.
Sure. And that makes sense.
Yeah, that's all, that's why I broke it up.
I still want to, want to just clarify for the public's understanding that the sewer budget and the general fund are completely separate, and that what.
Sure.
What happens to the general fund doesn't affect the sewer budget. I just don't want anybody to think that if we, to think that any future sewer increases might, might be in part to cover.
No, no.
I know, because that's not the case.
I just wanted to see how that might affect our bond rating.
Sure, fair enough. I guess you bring that up in the context of wondering whether or not we might be able to bond out the next.
Yeah, I don't know. That's going to be a big, I'm just, I'm just saying, when we get around to December and let's make a decision, are we going to raise the fee 15%?
Yeah.
Like we, like we've signed the consent agreement, or we once again are going to say, hey, we may be in a situation where we, you know, if you sell bonds, you get the city in debt.
Yeah.
And, so, I mean, it's not going to be an easy decision.
No, it's not going to be. All right, I suspect we're not going to have much choice but to, but to honor our commitment to the consent judgment and raise those rates.
Yeah, we have to do that, yeah.
The, in regards to postponing this decision till October, I'd still rather we go ahead and make a decision sooner than that, because we have, we have a rash of retirements right now. We saw, we saw a number of, number of folks leave us for other agencies last month. I expect we're going to see some more this month.
Yeah.
And that has a real fiscal implication for the city, because we don't just give employees pay raises out of the kindness of our hearts, because we want people to be happy, per se. We do it, you know, to retain experienced employees, and I think we do it in part because we recognize the value to the city of folks who, who, you know, the longer you've been here, the better you know your job, the better you are at it, the less training you need, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we just recognize the, the value to ourselves, and I think there is real value in retaining those folks, and I think the sooner we can give people at least a little bit of, a little peace of mind, the fewer we might lose over the next few months. So I'd be hesitant, I wouldn't want to wait till October, but that's, I mean, that's clearly something that's just going to have to be discussed by the full, by the full commission. Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. You have any questions? Okay, well, thank you for the information, and thank you for the discussion here, and we'll begin with this again later.
Oh, if I could note, too, that the, I am comfortable with it, with, you know, with covering that with surplus, and recognizing that there's a difference between surplus and the rainy day fund, as in the surplus is the amount that we're under budget that ends up contributing to the rainy day fund, and we've been running a pretty turbocharged surplus for the last couple of years, and have been putting a lot of money into the rainy day fund. And I think what we're really talking about here is just, is still growing the rainy day fund, just growing it less than we otherwise would have, but we're certainly not talking about depleting the rainy day fund or drawing it, or drawing it down.
But the size of the rainy day fund does have some impact, I understand, on, like bond ratings, things of that nature.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yes. Okay. Next discussion item, established in two-way traffic for West Main Street in downtown Frankfurt. See, Ray, you want to, Mr. something about this?
I had expected Mr. Hackmark to maybe review what has, the work that's been done previously on this, or do you have anything to report on that, on the two-way traffic?
In our last meeting, we referenced this study, the 2000 Frankfurt urban area transportation study, where they kind of analyzed the downtown traffic flows and how it's changed over the years, and basically did a pros and cons approach to looking at one-way versus two-way traffic, and I've got this document, and I'll make copies to put in your halls drawers. But previously, when they, we met with the county judge, and he had requested that we hold off on the change from our one-way scenario to two-way until the construction was completed at the courthouse. And I guess that's kind of where we have been, you know, we've been asked to hold off, and that's kind of where we were. So I guess maybe another meeting with the judge and see, now that they have a construction manager on board, what impact does he perceive a change to the construction schedule on the courthouse? And if it, get that, get that piece of information for, you know, a decision is made might be helpful.
Commissioner Wilder?
For what it's worth, I spoke with Mr. Bridges, or heard from Mr. Bridges earlier today of Codell Construction, who's overseeing, who's overseeing the construction of the courthouse, and I think this is something that staff would need to follow up on and not just take my word for it. But he actually did not anticipate any problems with changing that to two-way, or he didn't anticipate any impact. The only concern he raised were two very sunken-in storm drains there on the street, and he didn't know if that would be relevant, if that would be relevant or not. I think, frankly, I think that'd be as good an excuse as any to fix those storm drains. But I think, I think, I think the folks at the courthouse, we need to follow up with them, but I think they would be, I think they would be amenable. I will say that I agree with Ms. Everman that we need to at least get some idea of what, you know, what's in the, what's in the cooker. Although, although I'll also note that, you know, the commission only has, we only have two-year terms, we're, we're half a year through it, through a term already, so it's, we can't wait two years, we can't put any decision out for two years, because then we're not guaranteed the ability to even make it. But we'll, we'll take a look at what you've got.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One further item. I did contact the Transportation Cabinet and brought this issue up on Main Street, and then also said there might be some interest on. then also said there might be some interest on Anne Street, which is the state highway, and what the process is, convert either Main or both Anne and Main to, uh, two-way traffic. And, uh, they said basically we would apply for a permit to the state, and then they would identify, and at a minimum, they would probably look at asking the city to perform a traffic study and see what the traffic flow change, how the impacts would be, mostly on AM and PM, peak traffic flows, uh, is kind of when they're busiest, you know, our busiest time in Frankfurt. So, they're going to get back with me on what that permit would require the city to do, because it's going to take some time to get that through with the state, because it impacts a traffic light, or several traffic lights, depending on which, which route we go, but, um, I think at least we've made contact and, and there, it's balls in their core as far as what, what our requirements are.
Okay. Uh, thank you. You know, we've had a lot of discussions since we've been here on commission about two-way traffic on Main. I have this idea of maybe two-way traffic on Anne, you know, someone brought that to me-
Yeah.
And was talking about how it could, it helped to, that people went to them, makes a lot of sense, and that's why, uh, so if maybe we could, as expeditious as possible, maybe we get, looking with, with the state, whatever, and see how we move this along.
Amen, Mayor.
Pardon?
Amen.
Yeah.
Uh, of course, I'll work with Mr. Hackburg any way we can to do this. I had one additional question, if I may.
Sure.
Um, who controls the stoplights in the state? I'm, I'm relatively new to this game, so, uh, I can ask that question.
I think the city's a one-stop-light town. The only, I'm serious, the only stop, the only, currently in our budget, the only stoplight we maintain is one out by the hospital.
That's right. That's the only one that the city maintains.
Right, at the hospital.
Yeah.
So, what's involved in changing the others, or getting the others maintained, or moved, or whatever? I didn't mean to throw that on the side, it was, I, I can, I can work with Mr. Hackburg after hours to do this, if I don't have to listen to it.
Oh, it's good information.
Uh, just, can you do it quickly?
We're already intrigued.
Um, the city and the state have an agreement, um, we pay the electricity bill for the traffic lights, um, but they're actually, they install them for the city along the state roads, which basically consists of all state, all the, uh, lights are state maintained, um, we only own one at King's Daughter and near the hospital, so we've taken, kind of taken three out of service that used to be under the city's domain, so now we're just down to one traffic light, so. And anything like a modification that's maybe needed to an existing traffic light, we would work with the highway department through a permanent process.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, um, we exhausted maybe on, on the discussion.
Well, I guess it could just lead right into the next one. You know, my, my concerns with the two-way traffic on, on West Main deals mostly with the parking, you know, with the businesses down there, are you going to have to put loading zones in, or is that going to take more spots away?
Yeah.
And what do we do about the parking?
That would be, have to be addressed if we look into that.
It's the city's wellness program, and I'll get to it.
He's got his pedometer on today, getting his points.
Give it to him.
Going from a one-way to a two-way, that was one of the, uh, the issues addressed in the traffic study, was, um, right now, double parking is allowable on Main Street, so cars can go around and park, you know, a parked truck that's delivering, and traffic flows, you know, slowed down, but it still works. Um, going to a two-way street, um, you'd either have to look at something on like an alley, or take some of the parking on Main Street and convert it to a, a loading zone, or restrict to a time, you know, deliveries within this time zone, so there's some different options, and that's maybe one of the things we would ask the traffic study to recommend, how do we handle best that allows traffic to continue to flow, but allows the businesses to, to maintain their delivery? But that is, that is an issue.
I guess I'd just like to note that a couple of those options wouldn't have a significant impact on parking, especially in combination, so that if, if, if delivery times were restricted, um, so there weren't a loading zone that were there the whole time, there's maybe two spaces that open up, you know, two hours a day. Um, that in combination with allowing people to, to load and unload in the alleyways, which we have so many of in that part of town, we could probably get away without permanently taking away any spaces.
Two trucks show up on the same-
Sure.
Different sides of the street.
Yeah. Um, I've got another question, question for Jeff Saunders, we've got him up here. Uh, have, to what extent have we ever studied the feasibility of, uh, metering downtown?
Of what, what's going to-
Of metering, of, of actually bringing back parking meters?
Yeah.
My knowledge, they, we haven't done, uh, any type of study on metering for the last ten or fifteen years. I think Central Parking, who runs our parking garage-
Yeah.
The only thing different than what we, what we're currently doing is they came to the city years, a couple of years ago, where they would, we would hire them as a third party maybe to monitor on-street parking as a, uh, change, but that, that was never implemented. I'm, I'm not sure, Chief, if they priced it, or-
They did price it.
And was it, I guess-
About seventy thousand dollars.
So, I think that was the only other option, was to hire a third party to monitor on-street traffic. As far as we could find out if, how much parking meters cost, and, and see what that plan would be, versus maybe get an update from Central Parking, so we could have a couple to look at, see what the options are.
Because I'm, I'm not even necessarily advocating the option, but I guess, I guess, I think it's worth knowing what the option looks like, we're getting an idea of what that looks like, just because it can help start with enforcement.
Right.
Because as we talked about last week, we've, we've got lots of problems with folks parking almost all day in two-hour spaces downtown, and in some cases, they're, they are, they're, they're employees of the businesses that are complaining about the lack of parking. So, as in the business, I'm always concerned that there's not enough parking downtown, but it's, it's, in many cases, it's their employees that are spending all day out, out in those, in those spots. We could beef up enforcement, a lot of the folks who are spending all day downtown could, could park in, uh, even right now, the Sullivan parking garage.
Right.
And hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to get something happen on St. Clair sometime within the next few years.
Well, I'll investigate how much those, uh, units are, and be able to report back to you next Monday.
Without objection.
No objection.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one other?
Yes, sir.
Uh, in connection with this discussion, how is the loading-unloading zone working that's on Broadway?
I probably refer to the chief, uh, he's more familiar with the enforcement, uh, our parking ordinances and-
Well, like anything new, it took a little while for people to get used to it, but after a few tickets and some warnings and putting up some proper signage, it seems, at, at least during business hours, or the, the nine to five hours, it seems to be doing fairly well, as long as we, you know, kind of, kind of keep an enforcement aspect to it. You know, after hours, there's, people will pull up in there, just, you know, uh, quick, quick trip inside the store, or whatever.
Load their car with coffee.
Yes, yes, yes. But during the business hours, it, it seems to be, we, we don't have the complaints that we had when it first started.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Okay, uh, Mr. Snid, are we down now to the next item, which is adjournment?
That's what I see.
We've got a, we've got a motion for adjournment. Can you make a motion for it?
A motion. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, call room.
Mr. Wilder.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Head.
Yes.
Mayor Graham.
Uh, yes, good job. Is that team? Is that team?